So, welcome to the Wednesday, July sixteenth, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Mass General allow law allows for remote participation at public meetings until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded. School committee members, when I call your name, please stay here for the record. Nicole?
Here.
Kate?
Here.
Emily?
Here.
Jamie?
Here.
Zach?
Here.
Awesome. So now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation on your back. In the physical.
With liberty, justice for all.
Alright, um, we have no correspondence, so next on our agenda is the approval of minutes and we have a recommended motion.
Move that the school committee approved the minutes to the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Great, seeing none, we can move to a vote. Kate?
Uh, yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. Next up is public speak. Do we have anyone in the room for public speak tonight?
We do.
Okay.
Cool. Right here. Sure.
Uh, Michaela, they are here, so you just have them introduce yourselves and your address, please.
Yes, we are Bill and Terry DiGiulio, Eight Wood Side Drive, Long Meadow. And I just want it brought to the attention of the school committee that we went to Marty O'Shea's forum on the seventh to, um, you know, just, um, go to the forum and I was accosted by a gentleman that was standing right next to Marty O'Shea. And he said that it took all that he could do not to slap me in his face as he was staring me in my face. And I said, oh, really? You better shut up. And I bumped to my husband's arm and I said, this gentleman just accosted me. Marty O'Shea did nothing. Then I'll let my husband speak as to what happened to him.
Right, so that this was Monday, the seventh, this was the Long Meadow Middle School Open House at the Adult Center. Um, and the, not only, but when she, he made me aware of what he did, I confronted him and he then turned his anger toward me. And we had some words back and forth. And the gentleman actually asked me to step outside so he could, uh, kick my you-know-what. So, uh, as a paying resident of this town, whether we, you know, support or oppose the, the new middle school, um, we don't appreciate being accosted by somebody at, at a public event. And we, we rarely feel that, you know, this was Marty's venue. He should have intervened. At least spoken to the gentleman, told him he was out of order. And, uh, you know, we, we don't come to these, these things to cause harm or to threaten people and we don't expect to be treated that way when, when we attend them. I will say this, that we did go to the police department to report this. We were told that that is considered an assault. Um, we chose not to press charges, but to just report it. And we were told by Long Meadow Police Department that in the future, uh, open school events, information events, that if the gentleman does attend, then we don't feel comfortable to call them and they will send a representative. So.
And I do have to say, Nicole Chagnier, you have, um, when we had the special town vote last year, you were walking into the school and you called us troublemakers because we were handing out flyers. This behavior has to stop. We are not going to feel intimidated and this is not, this should not be happening here in Long Meadow. You should be above that and so should Marty O'Shea. This was his venue. He was standing right next to the gentleman, witnessed it all and could have said, you're out of line, you need to leave. He did nothing, nothing. So we felt we had to go to the police. They told us we could press charges. We did not want to do that. We just want this behavior to stop. Because if it happens again, I am giving you fair warning. We will go to the police and we will press charges. We are being intimidated.
I, I, I just want to add one last thing. You know, I, I, I know that the new middle school topic is one that, that brings out emotions and like any project in town that, that's costing hundred, over a hundred million dollars, that you're gonna have people who are in favor of it, you're gonna have people who are, don't support it for a variety of reasons. And, you know, as taxpayers of this town, we, we have every right to feel, you know, the way we do, that we, we oppose, we don't think it's the proper location. We're all for improving education in the town of Long Meadow.
And the schools.
And, and the schools, uh, and we have voted in favor of every funding request that, that has been asked since we moved here twenty-two years ago. And, um, you know, we have our reasons for opposing this. We just think that, that, that there are a number of issues with, with the site that was selected. But again, whether you agree with us or not, it's no reason for hostility, name-calling. And again, we pay taxes just like everybody. We have every right to oppose it and when it comes up to a vote, we, we will accept the outcome and, and move on, but, um.
That behavior has to stop and Marty, Marty is a superintendent of schools. He should not have allowed any talk like that to be allowed. I'm really disappointed in this behavior and that's why we had to report it.
I'm sorry to hear about how you feel. I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually stop you now though because your, your public speak time has gone to the limit.
Yeah, we're done. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for letting us know and I hope that we can resolve this and work together. Um, obviously, all we all want is, is what's best for the kids and what we do as a committee is try to do right by that by following through with everything that the middle school building committee has put forth and, and crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is. And I'm, I'm really sorry to hear that you had a hard time at the, the events that are planned to bring the community together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public speak?
Nobody else here, um, in the room.
Great. Alright, and we don't have any business with guests. So we're gonna go right into the school committee announcements and recognitions. And so for my chair report tonight, um, all I have to share is that we do have some big voting opportunities in September about the middle school building project and also keep a lookout for emails because there are events where people are trying to come and look at either tour, either of the schools. I know this last week at Williams Middle School, they were touring, um, the current conditions of the Williams Middle School. And keep an eye out for that. And also September ninth and thirtieth are important dates for the middle school and for voting on how you feel about that. Does anybody else on the committee have any recognitions or announcements they want to make? Seeing as there are none, we'll move on in the agenda. So, next up is our superintendent report and since Dr. O'Shea isn't here tonight, this evening, um, he did provide us with updates in an email. So if you haven't looked at that as a school committee member, check it out. And then additional reports, I don't believe we have any. I, we don't have any, there's no seal report. LPVEC, I don't think there's a report. Energy and Sustainability, is there any updated report, Emily?
No.
Awesome, thanks. Okay, so also same thing, student rep report, there's none because Ms. Danica Shea is our new student representative and she's gonna begin in the fall. So we're gonna move on to our subcommittee reports. Finance, there's no report. For policy, we do have a second reading and approval of recommendation for JJF Student Activity Accounts, which was posted to the district's website to solicit public input. And we didn't receive any input, so if there's any conversation or discussion or recommended motion, I'd entertain it.
I move on the recommendation of the policy subcommittee that the school committee approved the amended policy, JJF Student Activity Accounts and associated guidelines as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Kate?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. Curriculum Subcommittee, there's no report. Evaluation Subcommittee, there's no report, so we'll move on to new business and we do have some building use requests, so Mr. Maza, if you may.
Good evening. Um, in your packet is a building use request from the Long Meadow Parks and Rec Department for a co-ed basketball clinic for grades six through nine. Uh, starting on August eleventh through the fifteenth at the high school from nine AM to three PM. Um, based on the number of participants, this would require school committee approval.
Does anyone have any questions or comments or recommended motion?
I move that the school committee approved the building use request from the Parks and Recreation Department for use of the Long Meadow High School gym beginning on August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five through August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as indicated on the request form dated March seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Kate?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. Alright, so now we have a tuition student enrollment request, so, um, Mr. Maza, do you also want to talk about this one or should I? I don't know.
I can give a little background.
Okay, great.
The state allows for students who reside out of state to pay a tuition rate that is set by the school committee. Um, that is usually equal to our per student expenditure. So back in the spring, the student, the school committee set a, a tuition rate of seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, and we do have a request for a student to attend the Long Meadow Public Schools through the tuition process. Um, so Principal Landers from the high school has reviewed, uh, the student's, uh, information and has recommended the student for acceptance into the high school through the tuition process. And then it would require school committee approval to allow the student to attend through, um, through this program.
Are there any questions, discussions, comments?
I have a question.
Go for it, Kate.
So, uh, where do, where do these funds get allocated to?
So, we, assuming the student uh, attends for the year, the full tuition rate is paid and would be deposited into. We have a revolving account that is specific for tuition in students. Historically, we have used it to offset expenses in the subsequent year to ensure that we have the funds available. It has been, uh, a few years, a number of years since we've had a tuitioned-in student. So it's not a program that is, uh, used often. Um, like I said, it's probably been at least five, if not ten years, uh, since we've had a tuitioned-in student. So they would be, they would show up in our FY twenty-seven budget as being used to offset some costs associated to the educational program here in the Long Meadow Schools.
Offset.
Yeah, I mean, historically, we've used it for, um, services. It doesn't really require you to, um, use it towards the student-specific educational cost. But historically, they've been used to offset some costs associated to our, uh, special ed department, uh, expenditures.
So i- is this a program for special ed or is this, uh, open to all stu-
It's open to all students. So it's not a special ed-specific program, um. But again, it's not used very often.
And we need to offset costs in the future because the amount that was specified doesn't quite cover the cost.
Well, it would cover the cost of our expenditures for educating a student, but it doesn't allow you to really, you know, we, we use it not necessarily to offset the cost of each teacher that the student would have, because we're already, already employing those and budgeted their salaries. And so we just use it to offset some special ed expenditures in the subsequent year to ensure we have the full amount available to us in our revolving account.
And does the out-of-state, this is out-of-state, correct?
Correct.
And, and that person has to, um, provide their own transportation?
Correct.
I, I had a question. In the email, it said that there was a, a structure in place for reimbursement for the months that they live and reside here. What does that mean? If they end up paying the tuition and then they move here sooner than expected, do we reimburse the amount that they were going to pay for being an out-of-state student?
Correct. We would assess them, uh, tuition bill at the beginning of the year and usually a second one halfway through. Hypothetically, if they moved into town, say in November, we would, we would only charge them for the months in which they're, they're not a resident in Long Meadow and which they're entitled to attend the Long Meadow School. So we would reimburse them for the payment or a portion of the payment that they made, uh, that would cover the period when they were not a resident in Long Meadow.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? I do have one. So there's a, because there's also like a school choice lottery, right?
Correct, but that, that is for Massachusetts residents.
Oh, okay.
Out-of-state residents. You have to be a mass student attending another public school district in Massachusetts to be eligible to apply for the school choice program.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there, Emily, do you have another question about that?
No, tha- thank you for asking that, because yeah, that.
I was curious.
Yeah.
I also, I wonder like how you, you know, this doesn't have to do with our committee, but what about places like Long Meadow that live right on the border of another state, you know? Kind of tricky.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm here. Sorry, go ahead, Tom.
No, I was just gonna say this program obviously doesn't work for every district in Massachusetts based on their geographical location and, uh, access for out-of-state students. So it has been used in the past here in Long Meadow, like I said, but it's been a while since we've seen a tuitioned-in student.
Alright, are there any follow-up questions or conversation or recommended motion?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent and the principal of Long Meadow High School that the school committee accept an out-of-state student on a tuition bill as a student in grade eleven at Long Meadow High School.
Second.
Awesome, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Kate?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. Okay, so next up we have, it's your night, Mr. Maza.
It is.
We have the food service contract amendment and he's going to present to us about it.
Yes, so, um, in your packet is a, a contract amendment for, um, change with our food service management company, uh, Fresh Picks Cafe, which has been our food service provider for the last seven years. A couple of years ago, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uh, created a streamlined process for districts to use when they are going out to bid for food service management company services. And they've also streamlined the renewal process, so, uh, there is a common approach that districts use across the state, um, that use an outsourced model. The, um, you're allowed by regulation to go out for a bid, uh, no more than five years and as part of that uh, process is a annual renewal of up to four one-year authorizations. Uh, this amendment would be year three of that five-year process for our second one-year amendment with this company. Um, the terms are pretty similar. Uh, there is a slight increase in the administrative fee and management fee, which is, uh, payment we pay the vendor on a per meal basis. Uh, currently, the rate for the administrative fee is twenty-three cents and it is going up to twenty-three point six cents in this amendment. And then the management fee currently is seven cents per meal. And the rate in the amendment is going up to seven point two cents per meal. Uh, based on FY twenty-five participation, that would equate to about twenty-six hundred or so, uh, increased cost for the program next school year. So, and that's again, assuming level participation, uh, that we had in FY twenty-five. So, um, it, it, it's a standard practice. We do usually every spring or summer, uh, for the start of the next school year to have our food service management company in place for the beginning of school.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments, discussion about the amendment to the food service?
I move that the school committee approve the food service contract amendment with Fresh Picks Cafe, a division of Whitson's for July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, as presented and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the school committee.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Kate?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. Alright, moving right along. Um, so we decided most of our new, for the new school year, um, school committee assignments at our last meeting, but we had not decided on the LPVEC. So the school committee is required to vote on who represents the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative and there's also a calendar enclosed. And there's two positions, the Board of Governors Corporation, which meets at six, and the Board of Directors Collaborative that meet at six-thirty. And the school committee will appoint the representatives tonight in a vote. So are there any questions or comments about these positions or recommended motions?
Is there, I'm happy to move for someone to do it. Is there someone who would like to volunteer for one of these and I can make a motion? I see Kate nodding her head.
Volunteering, I'm not sure which one I'm volunteering for. I discussed it with, um, Michaela earlier. I'm not sure which piece of it.
And Emily, it looks like you said something too. Hmm?
Is it, have any questions or comments or interest or?
There are two positions, Michaela?
Yes, there are two.
So what was the difference?
I'm gonna defer this to Nicole.
Sure. Um, the Board of Governors is the corporation. Um, it meets at six o'clock. Um, it tends to be very quick meetings. They're more going over the minutes and making some final decisions on, um, budget. Um, and then the other one is the Board of Directors for the collaborative. Um, those meetings are a little bit more like our meetings. They're a little more comprehensive. They cover a little bit broader, um, scope of things and those start at six-thirty. I know Zach recently did the, um, collaborative one and Adam most recently has done corporation.
Collaborative is the Board of Directors, is that right?
Correct, collaborative is.
Okay, I volunteer myself for that.
Alright, perfect.
Thank you, Kate. Is there anybody else interested in the positions?
Emily, were you looking to be nominated for the other one? Sorry, so you looked like you were asking something.
No, I guess, um, so the other one that meets at six is just, it's not as involved, it's just kind of going through. But what, what is our, how do we fit into that role? Like what is our, our goal with joining that?
Yeah.
And defer to Zach too, go ahead.
Uh, I actually happen to serve in both roles, um, so I can speak to them a little bit. Um, the, um, the one that you're considering, Emily, um, is a very light lift. They meet remotely. They will occasionally ask you to sign, doc you sign things via email. You'll get together, everybody will just kind of get an update on what's going on and approve minutes and then you'll wrap up. So obviously with the next, it starts at six. The next meeting starts at six-thirty. Um, you're kind of time-bound to never go more than thirty minutes.
Sure, I'll do that one.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion for both of them then. Um, oh, I'm gonna do.
Thank you guys.
Sorry, I see they are separate. Um, I move that the school committee appoint Kate Bean to be the school committee representative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative Board of Directors.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I think this is a great fit for this role.
Thank you.
Um, seeing as there are none, we all move to a vote. Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kate?
Dane.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. So now we have one more position and maybe another recommended motion?
Yeah, I move that the school committee appoint Emily Hansen to be the school committee representative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Governors.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any further conversation or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Kate?
Yes.
Emily?
Upstand.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole? Nicole, I couldn't hear you. Is it me?
Oh, sorry. Yes, it might have been me.
Um, Zach?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. Okay, so next up on our agenda is the, um, middle school building committee and we've obviously had a shift and we have like new focus as a representative on our school committee. Um, and, but basically some background is in the fall of two thousand twenty-two, the school committee established the middle school building committee and it included two school committee representatives and two community representatives. the middle school building committee and it included two school committee representatives and two community representatives. Julie Morgan represented the school committee and it concluded on June third, two thousand twenty-five. And she's also expressed interest in continuing to serve on the middle school building committee. And it would also, um, be beneficial for the continuity of the committee that she continue as a community representative. So this appointment matches the Massachusetts School Building Association expectation that the middle school building committees include community representatives familiar with the education mission of the Long Meadow School District. The school committee is required to vote on retaining Julie as a school committee building school committee, middle school building committee representing us now as a community member and not as a school committee member. So the school committee is seeking to change the representation structure of the committee to include three members, uh, with an education mission and appointed by the school committee. Are there any questions about that or comments? Or recommended motions?
I move that the school committee amend the roster of the middle school building committee to allow for three community members knowledgeable in the education mission and appointed by the school committee.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have two. Exciting. Um, any further questions or comments? Seeing that there are none, we'll move to a vote. Kate?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
I, I think we might have lost Zach.
He put in the chat that he had to drop.
Oh, okay, no problem. And that's a yes for me also.
All right, um, I'm, oh, sorry.
We have no executive session, so we have one asked, recommended motion.
Actually, one more before that. Um, I moved that the school committee appoint Ju- Julie Morgan to serve on the school building committee as a community representative.
Thank you. Yep. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Awesome. Any further conversation or discussion? I'm certainly excited to have Julie stay on the committee as a community rep. Um, she's so knowledgeable and experienced and thorough. Glad to work with her. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Kate?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. And we have no executive session, so that leaves us with one final recommended vote.
I move that we adjourn the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I was going to say, Dallas, oh, you guys, wow, you want to keep going? All right, we have a second. Any further comments or discussion before we close the meeting? Seeing as there none, we'll vote. Kate?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And a yes for me also. And that concludes our July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five school committee meeting. Have a great night, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.